Oh, I thought it could run. Okay. Welcome for the microphone to the Historic Resource Commission meeting this Thursday, April 26th. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance given by Commissioner Schaefer?
If you'll place your hand up over your heart and repeat after me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Okay. With the Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hittardale, Commissioner Rush.
Present.
Commissioner Marashi.
Here.
Vice Chair Schaefer.
Here.
Chair Christie. Chair Christie. Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Tardif.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Yeah.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Now, if you would like to entertain public comments, this is where you get to speak on non-agendized items, okay? To speak, we will hear your comments, but we will not act on it. The first one I have is Dale Helwig.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Dale Helwig, San Ana resident for 28 years, and I really don't know where to begin. There is an agenda item, there is an agenda item on the current document for you guys to discuss a resolution on 2525. It's come to my attention that that may not be the case, and I find it disturbing that the applicant has submitted documents to say that your actions are unjustified and not warranted by your commission. A project like Hiss is disturbing for San Ana, it's disturbing for our neighborhood, and it's interesting to know that he is so threatened by us that he is taking this action. A project should stand by the merits that it's developing, a good product. Evidently, he doesn't feel his product is good enough to withstand opposition, and so he wants to suppress voices from being heard. It's just mind-boggling to me that he can come in from outside the city and dictate what the city should be doing to ensure the integrity, the quality of life, and everything else that surrounds, that's good about the city is destroyed, really. And I hope that you guys understand that his actions aren't going unnoticed, you know? So, just want to let you guys know. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Does there anyone else want to speak, public comments on non-agendized items? If not...
Chair, if you would like, I believe the attorney would like to say something at this point.
Chair Christie, we would like to move item number six to the forefront on the agenda, and I would ask...
Okay. I was...
I would ask that Commissioner Nguyen recuse yourself at this moment.
Okay. For all of us, it was number five in our packet. We do not have, it's just a misprint, but on the agenda, it's item number six. So, our attorney, Lisa Stopp, if you could...
Yes, you should have all received a memo and an email this afternoon regarding this resolution. Our office reviewed it and reviewed the duties and responsibilities of this commission and felt that there were some valid concerns that were raised. All the issues that you as commissioners have discussed and expressed concerns about will all be addressed at the Planning Commission level. The Planning Commission has the purview of reviewing this project. As residents, again, as I told you originally, you all have the right to express your concerns in writing by appearing at the meetings and voicing all of your concerns, but at this point, I recommend pulling this item.
And it is my responsibility, based on the direction of our city attorney, to pull this item from the agenda tonight.
Okay. And I understand we have no comments.
Right, so there can be no discussion amongst the commissioners on this matter.
Chair Christie, I disagree. I think this is an item that falls within the purview of the Historic Resources Commission. I have distributed a copy of the powers and duties of the Historic Resources Commission, and one of those is to advise and make recommendations to the Planning Commission, City Council, and other city boards and commissions regarding historical projects and property. That's one.
This is not a historical project, nor is it a historical property. 2525 North Main is the property that was in question.
Well, Madam, it's certainly seated, situated exactly next to a historic neighborhood. I mean, no one, no one would disavow that statement. And I was the one that made the motion to ask to have this agendized. It was unanimous by this commission to place it on the agenda. I have to tell you, I'm personally offended that it took so long to get it on our agenda, and I can't help but wonder if there wasn't something nefarious going on as to why it took so long to get on our agenda. We passed, we asked this to be on our, on our agenda months ago, months. I could have written the resolution in an hour. Shouldn't have taken months. So, here at the 11th hour, we get a letter from the applicant's attorney threatening us that we have to remove it from the agenda. Well, as, as our fellow commissioner here has documented, this is certainly within the purview of this commission to have an opinion about that project, which is immediately on the threshold of a very large and historically sensitive neighborhood.
Can I clarify that? The city does have historic, does not have a historic designation on that particular neighborhood. That may be something, so at this time, it is not considered a historic neighborhood. In addition, we need to end this conversation is not agendized, so this conversation cannot occur. However, if you would like to, if the chair would like to reopen the public comment period and allow those people to speak who are here to speak on it, you may hear them, but you may not discuss this among yourselves.
Excuse me, Candida, where does it say we cannot discuss this? It is on the agenda.
Once it is pulled from the agenda, you may not discuss an item that is in your, that is in your rules and regulations. So, yes. So, if you would like to proceed to hear public comment...
I disagree. One commissioner cannot pull an agenda item. They can pull it to discuss it.
It is, no...
The item's been pulled.
You are misleading us.
The item has been pulled, sir.
Okay.
If there are speakers in the audience that wanted to speak on the matter, we will still allow them to have their three minutes to speak on the item.
Okay.
This will not be the last you hear of this.
Okay. Be sure to fill out a green card for us, please, and you'll have three minutes, green, yellow, red to sign.
Before I start?
You can, you can do it afterwards, okay?
Okay. I'm Kelly Medina, I live in Park Santiago.
I'm sorry. Would you please, Ms. Medina?
Kelly Medina, I live in Park Santiago, and I was at the Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday and advised that this subject of 2525 North Main would be on the agenda, and therefore, we made an effort to be here today to voice our disagreement with the construction of 2525 North Main and how much it would be a blight to our neighborhood and lifestyle and just the general enjoyment of the, it'd be so much clogging up of the streets around it in conjunction with the additional orange high-rise things, but mostly, it would change the character of the neighborhood, which I've lived in for 20 years. I grew up in San Ana, I've been here for at least 54 years, and there, this is one of the few places that remains that has a lovely quality to it, that people who come to visit say, "Oh, I didn't realize San Ana was like this," as opposed to the neighborhoods to the south of 17th Street where some years later, before, somebody obviously had pushed an agenda through to build high-rise apartments right in the middle of historic homes, and it is very blighted in those sections, in my opinion. I would tend to avoid it, it's way overcrowded and congested all the time, parking, et cetera. So, I wish that somebody would just listen to people instead of somebody who has a bunch of money to throw at the city, because somewhere else, maybe, they're not using the money properly and they need more. So, I don't know what the reason is, but I don't like the fact that this seems to be getting shoved under the rug and our voices are not being heard well. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Medina.
This matter will go before the Planning Commission where you can also speak.
Hopefully, they'll listen. Is this what you want?
Okay. Would you introduce yourself and also fill out the form after you speak, please? And you have three minutes, red, I mean, green, yellow, red.
My name is Janelle Johnson, I live on Santiago Street in Park Santiago. My husband and I have owned our home for over 20 years. We have fixed it up, we have invested considerable amount of money in not only purchasing it, but maintaining it, and we enjoy the quality of life we have in Park Santiago. The vast, since this project has been going on, it has caused a lot of distress for all of the residents in this neighborhood that I've spoken with and had contact with. Nobody wants this, nobody. Very few people are opposed to anything at all going in there, they don't care, they know something's got to go there, but this is not the answer. This is going Main Street with the Interstate 5 exchange there, the Science Discovery Center, kids crossing Main Street all the time, cars coming in and out on Edgewood, that's a very dangerous intersection area, and to add another 1,500 or 2,000 cars coming in and out of Main Street on, for that, for this proposed development, I don't know how we'd ever get around. It would be just gridlock all the time. Coming down here on Monday for the Planning Commission meeting took us almost 25 minutes, and that's weirdest in Park Santiago. So, thank you for hearing me, and again, I oppose this vehemently. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak who have not spoken at this time?
This is the second public comment, so can I speak a second time?
Okay. Since we reopen it, go right ahead.
I won't need the full three minutes. I would encourage everyone sitting up there on the commission and the attorney's office to take a look...
Could you do yourself, please, again?
Dale Helwig, Park Santiago. I encourage every one of you to take a look at the minutes or the, you know, the video, audio, whatever, from the January 25th meeting. You guys had a real nice discussion on it, lasted over 10 minutes. One of the things that was discussed was between the city attorney and the planning department, coming up with a bulletized item of things that were acceptable to discuss in the resolution. Evidently, that was done in the resolutions here, so what's changed since January 25th? A letter from the developer, you know? Again, the city attorney's office said it was okay to do, they might have had reservations on it, but they didn't squash it. So, I'd like to know what happened to those bullet items that were going to be put in this resolution, so, thanks.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment if, when it's appropriate.
No, you can't. Non-agendized items, you cannot comment.
Hello, my name's Tara Franklin, and I live in Park Santiago, and I just believe that this project is wrong for the space. I think it should remain an office building and not be rezoned. It doesn't fit. That's simply, it just doesn't fit there. Thank you.
Please fill out a form. Okay. Anyone else? Moving on, we will go to our consent calendar. On item A, the minutes of the special meeting, which is held on January 22nd, I'd like to amend that we were told that Commissioner Schaefer was on his way, but he was not here. He was out of state or out of an area or whatever, but he did not get back to us, though. We did not excuse his absence, so I would like to amend that his absence be excused. Say a motion?
Did you want to take a vote on that?
Huh?
Did you want to take a vote on that?
Yes.
Could I comment on that?
Of course.
I thought I had let the clerk know, but I was on vacation with my wife, and we were out of the country. Sorry.
Okay. Okay. Is there, I move for amending the minutes to excuse Commissioner Schaefer from my...
So moved.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Rush, Commissioner Rush, seconded by Commissioner Tara. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All of them.
I abstain.
And, I'm getting that. Motion, all those, no, all abstention?
One.
Okay. The motion carries seven, seven yes, one abstention. Okay? Okay, and then, if we have no excused absences, everybody here. Item C, ordinance amendments to revise section of San Ana Municipal Code regarding the frequencies of meeting on the Historic Resource Commission. All those in, may I have a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Nguyen, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rush. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? I oppose. Okay, abstentions. Motion carries seven, one, with Commissioner Hardy voting no. Okay. All right. On the business calendar, I just want to say, what happened, communication of disclosure for commissioners?
I would like to disclose that Chairperson Alberta Christie and Chairperson Lawrence Hittardale and I visited all four homes on Sunday, and we had the wonderful pleasure of meeting Carol and her husband in Washington Square and getting an education on their home.
Yes. Okay. All right. Moving on with the business calendar, now is the time and place for the public hearing on item number one for Historic Resource Commission application number 2017-5, Historic Register categorization 201749, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement 2017-54. Staff will now make a presentation at this time. Good.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm well, I'm well, thank you. I'm filling in for Ivan Flores, the case planner, on this, the first project, he's out ill. So, just to give a quick overview, the projects tonight are four projects, and the requests by the applicants are to place them on the local register and pursue a Mills Act agreement. The one I'll be touching bases on is the 1110 West 16th Street. But just as a recap, the categories options are contributive, which is a building, structure, or object that contributes to the overall character and history of a neighborhood or district, and is a good example of period architecture. The other category we'll be looking at tonight is the key category, and that's for buildings or structures with distinctive architectural style and characteristic of a significant period of history and/or associated with a significant person or event in the city. So, this particular project, what we're looking at tonight, is at 1110 West 16th Street, and we've had the opportunity to discuss a little bit more with the current owner, Mrs. Frank, and this is a unique ranch architectural style. It's a little hard to see in this particular photo, but for those that have been out to the site, it is in Washington Square, and it includes a detached garage that's connected to the house with a kind of a garden, open patio area. This particular architectural style of ranch is intended to bring the outdoors in, indoors out, so it's a very unique ranch-style home. Some of the characteristics are the low-pitched roof with the overhanging eaves and exposed rafters. The exterior of the building and the detached garage is clad in vertical wood siding, and the primary elevation faces 16th Street, of course. The porch entry is characterized by double doors, double door, each with four fixed lights, which you can't really see from this vista, and the entryway and windows are framed by triangular windows located below the roof gable, and they're found throughout the house, large windows. There's also a brick chimney that rises below the ridge west line of the main entry. So, and the house was constructed in 1954. We've, what you have on the PowerPoint here is slightly different than what is in your report. In talking to the current owner, Ms. Frank and her husband, it became clear that the information was not fully vetted, and in fact, the Frank family were the original owners of the property, and Mr. and Mrs. Frank original were there from 1954 through the 70s. So, it's our typical protocol to name the house after the original owner, particularly with such a long tenure stay, 20 years plus, and in addition to that, we're also offering consideration that the house be considered key because of its uniqueness in its ranch style and the significance of the architect. The architect, well, actually, when he designed the house, he was not yet an architect, he was a designer, so he was quite unique in that he did a number of amazing homes and such, but was a designer, not a full-fledged architect. So, in his, because of his well-known work and quality of work and uniqueness, we would like to offer that it may be considered as a key for its distinctive architecture. So, the other thing we'd like to frame is that since there is some amount of text that we would want to adjust in relationship to the description of the first owner and add additional information on Cliff May, the designer, we would also consider that we could bring it back to the following meeting and provide the adjusted narrative, so you could see that in place, should you show wish. In addition, Ms. Frank is here to provide some other interesting information that I think she shared with a couple of commissioners. Happy to answer any questions.
I would like for, are there any questions for the, from the committee to the staff? I think she's here.
Yes.
Frank? Would you please come in? I would love to have you comment on that, okay? The applicant.
My name is Carol Frank, and my parents are the original owner. This is a Cliff May house. Cliff May is a California kid. He was raised in San Diego, moved up here to LA in about 1934, where he did his first track group up there in LA, West LA, called Riviera Ranch. As, as World War II kind of loomed around, we had, you know, we had a lot of defense work that was being done here, and there was workers and they need homes. So, he started developing these ranch, low-cost ranch houses. My mother says it wasn't that low of a cost, but it was, that's what it was called. And then also returning vets. Both of my parents are World War II vets. They both were teachers, link flight trainers in Reno, Nevada. My father was from New York, my mother was from Kentucky. So, in 1953, he actually had a partnership with Chris Coat and formed the Ranch House Corporation, and there becomes, my house is actually called the Magic Money House. Now, at that point, the modernistic houses that were there, they're out there, they weren't really embraced too much by the Americans, but they loved this ranch house, so do we. This is a prefab house. I know that's kind of, everybody kind of like goes, "Ooh," but it is. It is in panels of five and a half by five and a half, which were built off-site and moved onto the property. My parents bought the property and the house before it was built. So, one night, they had all the panels out, be put up the next door, my, next day up, my parents came in and rearranged them a little bit, so it's a little custom. So, basically, his, the theory of this whole house is basically, is based on a style of living, not the style of architect, and to, today, we have done absolutely nothing to this house, except for my mother changed the door out, but everything is still original. We love it. It is one of those houses that has indoor and outdoor, you can't, it's, it's open, which is, you know, the in thing now. This house was built in the mid-'50s. He wasn't a trained architect, he didn't become a certified architect until later in his life, and he had a long relationship with Sunset. In fact, the original headquarters up in Minto Park was designed by Cliff May, and if anybody ever looked at a bottle of Robert Medabi Winery on their label, he designed that building along with Robert Medabi's home, which he and his wife occupied until about six years ago, which got bought out by some little family named Gallo, I think her name is Gina. So, we've, we've all seen her. So, she now lives there with her husband and their twins. I think he was a very important architect here for the mid-century. He's important to, not only California, but in architecture in whole, and my husband and I have a passion for the house, and I, and I welcome any of you guys to come over and really take a long tour of it. You just got to see a little bit of it, and I promise we'll have, we did a barbecue for the, down at the fairgrounds, I had like six crock pots on the table, so, and that was about it.
It still is a very beautiful home, and the outside, the inside...
Courtyard.
Courtyard.
Yeah, the tree in the, the pine tree in the front was planted by my mom. That tree, that little tree is over 50 years old, and the two bushes in the patio that actually shade the patio, which are now, what, 50 feet tall, something like that, those were planted by my dad, so those things are very personal to me, and I'm excited to have this happen, have my parents recognized for what they contributed to the United States as being vets and being very active here in California, and I just, we just love the house, and we just want it preserved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need to fill anything out? Okay.
No. Before we go forward, I just, you know, the staff has recommended, and as we were out there on Sunday and filed all of these errors and not true statements, so the staff has recommended for them to clear the record, make it authentic and accurate, and that we postpone it. Is that an inconvenience for you?
We're fine with that.
You're fine with that? Okay, because our next meeting will be?
May 24th.
May 24th. So, is there a motion for the commission to postpone this as the staff is getting the information corrected?
I'll make that motion. Is that time to do that?
Motion to postpone it until May 24th. So, it's moved by Commissioner Hardy.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Schaefer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those... All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero. Okay? Thank you once again, and we'll be out there again to see, to see your beautiful home. Beautiful.
To see the rest of the yard and the house.
Right. Okay? Thank you for coming out, okay? Be sure to get your parking validated, okay? All right. Thank you, commissioners. Okay? All right. Now, we, now, we are on item number two. This is the time and place for the public hearing on item number two for Historic Resource Commission application, 2017-48, Historic Register Categorization 2017-47, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement 2017-52 for the property located at 1110 West 16th Street.
No.
No.
321, East Santa Clara. We just did 16th.
Okay, hold on, hold on, one second. So are we on?
Number two.
Number two.
Two.
Okay. Item number two is not correct on my thing. Okay? No, the whole thing. Okay? So we just got through it one. Okay, so, all right, time, oh, recess here. I need to talk to the secretary here because it's not what you've given me. So who is what? Look at this. Look at this.
East, east.
So this is correct?
Yes.
That people are correct?
Yes.
All right, what about this one? This is not correct.
Yes. This is number two, this is page two, this is page three.
But it can't be item number?
Two and number three.
Three.
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you for that because, not finished. Okay, the staff will make the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. The property up for discussion is located at 321 East Santa Clara Avenue and was constructed in 1925 in the Tudor Revival style. This residence is historically significant for its association with ZB West Jr. and Franklin G. West. The West family played a vital role in the courtrooms of Orange County for more than 60 years, starting with ZB West Senior, ZB West Jr. and Franklin's father. West Senior served as Santa Ana City Attorney for seven years, then was appointed District Attorney in 1897, then later serving as Superior Court Judge from 1903 until his death in 1926. The first recorded occupant-owner of the property is ZB West Jr. He was the Senate, he first graduated from Santa Ana High School, then attended Stanford and graduated, and then he later served in France in World War I, after which he returned to Santa Ana and established his law practice. He was admitted to the bar in 1921, and then after which he also, he followed in his father's footsteps and also served as District Attorney and then City of Santa Ana City Attorney from 1923 until 1927. Following ZB West Jr.'s occupancy of the residence was his brother Franklin West. Franklin West resided at the residence from 1932 until 1962. Franklin also followed in his father's footsteps and served as Superior Court Judge. He served as Superior Court Judge from 1939 until 1965, and he was also, he also attended Santa Ana High School and then later Stanford. Franklin West was held in such high esteem by the Orange County Bar Association that their highest bestowed honor is a lifetime achievement award that they named in his honor. And just to quote some information from their webpage, it says, according to the Orange County Bar Association, Judge Franklin West epitomized the best of legal profession, both as, both as an attorney and a judge. The award which recognizes an outstanding attorney or judge whose lifetime achievements have advanced justice in law is presented annually. A third brother, a third brother who did not reside at this residence was Eddie West, and I think some of you guys may know him. The stadium across the street is named in his honor. So the West family has a rich history and tradition here in Santa Ana, and two of those brothers resided here at this residence. And just to kind of go over some of the criteria, to be eligible to be placed on the register, a property need to be 50 years old and qualify for one of the six here. Most of the properties that you've seen in the recent past have qualified under criteria one for its architecture. This one is slightly different, and it's being recommended for approval as key under criteria four for its association with the two West brothers that resided at the property. So based on the analysis provided in my presentation and also in the report, staff is recommending that the property be listed as key on the register and that the commission recommend approval of the Mills Act agreement. That concludes my presentation. To answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ricardo. Okay, is the applicant?
Yes.
Here.
He is.
Okay? Do you wish, hi, Blair? Do you wish to speak?
We're leaving questions.
Okay? All right. Any of commissioners have questions of the staff? Commissioner Rush?
I noticed that you have verbiage commenting about that stucco was replaced, and it was not appropriate to the style of home. What?
That's correct.
What was done?
There were two projects done. If you guys visited the site, you may have seen an addition project to the south, and also some interior work and some spa work. At that time, it was being reviewed by the planner that was in charge of the historic preservation program. The massing in addition were deemed to be consistent with Secretary of Interior standards. They were working with the applicant or the property owner to have the home re-stuccoed in the finish that was appropriate for the style. In speaking with the applicant or the property owner, it sounds like he attempted to replicate the, the finish that was there. In visiting the site, it looks like the finish isn't one that we usually see in this architectural style. And in reviewing the stucco finish with our architectural historian that we have on, as a consultant, she agreed. However, for this site, like I was saying, even though it's been modified and stuccoed isn't quite consistent, those aren't the reasons that this property is being proposed to be listed on the register.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ricardo. Okay, and have we received, Madam Secretary, any?
We have not.
Okay. Public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak on this project, would you please come forward? You have three minutes and fill out a yellow form. Okay, moving right along, okay. The public hearing is now closed. I'm going to bring it back to the commission for their comments, okay?
I have some comments.
Okay.
I think Mr. O'Callahan deserves an award for historic preservation with this property. I was privileged enough to be part of his adventure in buying this house. First of all, it's remarkable that this has been in one family. Blair's only the second owner, and the house is 90-plus years old. My understanding is that the house was vacant for approximately 30 years when we first went inside of it. It was pretty horrific, vines growing through the roof and into the inside of the house, and no working plumbing, et cetera. So it was uninhabitable when he first bought the house. He did a brilliant restoration on it. I know he tried very, very hard to blend in and match with the original house and restore as much of it as possible, custom-built windows, et cetera, to match the original. So he did a painstaking job that took years to accomplish and has really done an amazing job. Short of the history of the West family in Santa Ana, it is one of the most beautiful homes in Park Santiago. When he bought it, the entire front of the house had vines that were, what, three feet thick, Blair? I mean, trunks this big on vines growing on the front of the house. So he's really, the effort that's gone into this is amazing, and it is truly a beautiful home, so I'm happy to see it being nominated tonight.
Any other comments? Commissioner, could they?
Probably isn't necessary because I think we are going to put this on the registry. I just wanted to mention a little something about Franklin West. I looked him up on the Bar Association site. He was born in Santa Ana in 1896, 1210 North Wall Street, and he was in this home for 30 years, so the home has a lot of history. And then he was indeed a Superior Court Judge from 1938 to 1965, so not quite 30 years as a Superior Court Judge. And in the history of the Bar Association, from written year 2000, 100th anniversary of the Orange County Bar Association, there's a little discussion of his father, who was at one time the only Superior Court Judge that the county had in the 1920s, and how, what a great man his father was, and they continue by saying what a great man Franklin West was. As you know, he, the award for lifetime achievement is, is named after him, and other, let's say, description of him on the Bar Association site, it was asserted that he's often considered Orange County's greatest judge, and that could be said that he was as fine a legal scholar as the county has ever known. Well, this could be somewhat exaggerated. That was the year 2000. The award was established in 1971. Clearly, he was a very eminent, a very eminent.
Jurist.
Judge, and more than anyone as a judge, I think would be person stumped to living is, but he rose to another level before that. His, I might also mention that his brother, ZB, who lived in the house for three years, not a man of stature, right, but was still an important attorney. When we talked about it to one of Otto Jacobs' homes, the Overell trial, and ZB West was Otto Jacobs' partner in getting Dula Overell acquitted of the murder for, for parents. Obviously, the, her uncles and aunts wanted to give her some sterling defense attorneys turned to Otto Jacobs and to ZB West as two of the very finest attorneys in Orange County at that time. So Mr. Schaefer says this was a very prominent family in the, in the history of Orange County, particularly Franklin West is a very eminent man. And we should honor, honor the family by putting this house on the registry and the P. designation.
Commissioner Rush?
Well, Blair, I know that you're not an attorney, but, you know, since, since the providence of that house was well-connected to the bar, I would hope you at least have a liquor bar in the house to, you know, there ought to be some bar connection there, given, given all.
Last thing, will O'Callahan have a choice?
You're right. That's so true, absolutely. So, well, congratulations. I'd love to see before pictures.
Is there any other? Okay? Is there a motion? Commissioner Schaefer?
I'd like to make the motion that we adopt resolution approving Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2017-48 and approving Historic Register Categorization 2017-47, and also recommend that we execute a Mills Act with the city attorney for the same.
Sir, we're second.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Schaefer, second by Commissioner Tarah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion countered. Congratulations. Now is the time for the public hearing number three, item number three, for Historic Resource Commission Application 2017-43, Historic Register Categorization 2017-42, Historic Property Preservation, Preservation Agreement Number 2017-47 for the property located 2440 Riverside, North Riverside Drive. Okay? Staff will now make a presentation. The pardon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The property is constructed in 1937 in the neoclassical style. It is symmetrical, symmetrical in composition topped with side gable, medium-pitch roof with modest overhangs. The exterior structure, exterior structure is clad with wood clapboard siding. Projecting from the center bay of the three-bay facade is a full-height front gable entry porch supported by paired fluted door columns, which is the focal point of the, the home. Side lights adorn the entry door with a fan light transom above the door, and a fixed window occupies the central bay above the entrance under the portico. The east elevation is distinguished by a red brick chimney and small arched vents in the gable face. A one-story flat roof addition has been made to the south elevation, and it's not visible from the street. The property is landscaped with low vegetation, neatly trimmed hedges, and has a neat water feature positioned in the walkway leading to the front entry. The first recorded occupants of this home were George D., Greg, and Catherine Greg. Mr. Greg was a local representative for the LA Examiner, which was a major newspaper in Los Angeles in the 1960s. The next recorded occupants were Benjamin F. Stevens and Virginia M. Stevens. Mr. Stevens was a rancher in the area. The home was then sold to Homer Moses in 1962, who worked in piano cells and repairs. The Greg home, or the Greg House qualifies for listing under criteria one for its representation of the distinguishing characteristics of the neoclassical style. In addition, the house is being proposed to be categorized as key because it has distinguishing architectural features and style and quality representing the neoclassical style in Santa Staff recommends that the Historic Resource Commission approve listing of the property and categorization as key, and recommend approval of the Mills Act agreement on this property. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, Ricardo. Does the commission have any comments or questions to the staff? No? Thank you so much. Okay? Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to say thank you for taking the time to consider the application.
Your name, please?
My name is Doug Myers, and I'm one of the homeowners. My wife is not here, but I'd like to take the opportunity just to thank Ricardo for putting together the presentation and to thank you all for taking the time to consider our application, and I'm willing, ready and willing to answer any questions you have about our property.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Myers. Okay? Madam Secretary, do we have any written communications?
We have not.
Okay, if not, the public hearing is now open. Is anyone in the audience with, to speak on this application? If not, public hearing is now closed. Now, we will now bring it to the commission for comments on, or a motion. Comments?
I have a couple of comments. A very dear friend of mine used to own this property from 1971 to 1981. She's passed away now, but her name was Jean Stone. So if there's a few floral park people that have been around for a long time, you might have known her, but she was a decorator, she played the piano, she was a realtor. Later in her life, she staged homes, staged many, many homes for me, so she just had a real flair about her, and I'd like to congratulate the current owners who have restored the house and done a beautiful job. It was beautiful when Jean was there, but that was many years ago, and people come in between. So I would like, if we can, just to have the staff insert, it stops the ownership when Jean bought the house. If we could just add that Jean Stone owned it from 1971 to 1981 as a friendly amendment. Don't need to come back before the commission, but I would love to see that happen.
We'd be happy to make that amendment.
Anyone else? Mr. Myers, when I was a teenager, many, many, many years ago, someone asked me, what kind of home? And I'm a native Californian. Your home, that style home, neoclassical, was the one I said, this is where I want to live. So when I married a marine and left the girl. So, when I married a marine and left the Golden Coast, went to nineteen sixty-five, Cherry Point, North Carolina, okay, during the height of the Vietnam War, we were driving around, I go, oh, there's my home. I want to be there, okay? Unfortunately, California and North Carolina does not get along together, okay? And so forth. But your home is just absolutely gorgeous. This was my dream home, of the type that I wanted to live in. I'm like, who knows? One of these days, I'll win the lottery and build my dream home or find it on the neoclassico. Will never give up on that. But I had a chance to see and visit the home of my dreams of that at your house very well. Okay? Is there a motion? Oh, don't speak all at one time, guys.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make the motion.
Okay.
That, okay. We adopt a resolution approving Historic Resource Commission Application Number Two Zero One Seven dash four-three and approving Historic Registry Categorization Number Two Zero One Seven dash four-two. I also recommend that the city council approve, authorize the city manager and the clerk of the council to execute a historic property preservation agreement, number Two Zero One Seven dash four-seven, with Douglas J. Myers and Joanne Lorenz, subject to nonsubstantive changes approved by the city manager and city attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Rushi and seconded by Commissioner Win. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Okay. Next, this is a time and place for a public hearing on item number four for the Historic Resource Commission Application Number Twenty Seventeen dash forty-five, Historic Registered Categorization Twenty Seventeen dash forty-four, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement Twenty Seventeen dash forty-nine for the property located at twenty-three seventy North Flower Street. Staff? Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners. Item number four is being called the Evans-Harr House, and it's located on two-three-seven-zero North Flower Street within the Floral Park neighborhood. The property is a single-story, single-family residence constructed in the minimal traditional style in nineteen forty-seven by prominent local builder and developer E.C. Rogers. It's recommended that the property be listed on the register and categorized as contributive because it contributes to the overall character of Floral Park and because it's a good example of period architecture. The property is a highly characteristic example of the modestly sized, minimal traditional style home. Asymmetric in design, the house exhibits a low pitched crossed hip roof, which is clad in asphalt shingle roofing. The exterior walls are clad in smooth stucco with minimal to no ornamentation. The small entry portico is characterized by lacy, New Orleans-style wrought iron posts and by a decorative cast iron porch light. The southern portion of the front elevation incorporates a divided light metal casement picture window framed by wood shutters. The northern portion of the front elevation features divided light steel casement windows with corner supports. The building also incorporates a series of double hung wood windows, including four over four single, excuse me, including four over four and single pane sashes. The south elevation features a prominent bay window with a protruding decorative brick wall below. According to city directories, the first known residents were Charles J. Evans and Violet A. Evans. Mr. and Mrs. Evans were a retired couple who lived in the house for fifteen years until nineteen sixty-two, when it was listed as vacant. Robert K. Harr and Diane F. Harr purchased the home in nineteen seventy-seven. Mr. Harr, along with his business partner, were affiliated with several patented designs. However, Mr. Harr was more prominently known as the dog handler of Rex, otherwise known as Oki, a highly decorated German Shepherd dog that served during World War II. Given the distinguishing characteristics of the minimal traditional style, its contribution to Floral Park, and the fact that it's associated with E.C. Rogers, staff recommends approval of listing of the property as contributive. Staff also recommends that the city enter into a Mills Act agreement with the owner. That concludes staff's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time. And I'd like to note that the owners, Shaw workers are here to answer any questions.
Very good. Okay. Okay. Does any commissioner have any questions with staff or comments? Thank you, Pedro. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Mark Shaw Walker. Thank you for taking the time to consider my property, and thank you, Pedro, for all the work that you've done. I was raised in Floral Park and have left and come back for school and jobs over the years, recently returned in twenty sixteen. Was thrilled to be back in the neighborhood. Didn't anticipate I was going to find such a fantastic property as quick as I did, but when I saw it, fell in love with it and have enjoyed being there for a little over a year now. It's a place I call home. It's beautiful architecture and a place I'm looking forward to spending many, many years in.
Thank you so much. Madam Secretary, do we have any written communication?
We do not.
Okay. Okay. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time on this application? Okay. If not, the public hearing is now closed. And I'll bring it back to the commission for comments and a motion.
Mark, I understand that you had two concerns about the application. Could you address those, please?
Right. Thank you. In the notes that were sent out electronically, I noticed on the recommendation, I believe there was a different property with owners' names on it in the recommendation? On the electronic notes that went out?
We'll go ahead and correct that for you.
Okay. Super. And the second question, I actually had an opportunity to talk to Pedro about the naming of the house, so I was just trying to understand how the naming came up, because I think when it was presented, it was suggested as the Rogers-Harr House, and then became the Evans-Harr House. And Pedro explained the change, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments. I actually met and spoke with Robert Harr on multiple occasions when he owned this home. And to say he was a colorful and interesting guy would be a gross understatement. He claims that John Wayne and Lucille Ball had dinner at his house. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what he claims. He seemed to be very connected with the movie industry in Southern California and certainly knew a lot of, or, you know, said he knew these people personally. And so, that was, that was great, more than just those two. He would tell me lots of stories. And he was quite proud of his dog Rex, and I think Rex did some TV and movie type work as well later in his life. So, I think it's appropriate that we're naming it, you know, the Harr name is in there because they were there for a very long tenure and took lovely care of the house. When he lived there, it had a shake roof with a tile ridge cap on it, which was very distinctive. You don't see a tile, a Spanish clay tile ridge cap very often, but sometimes you do see that on a comp or a shake roof. So, it just always was a very handsome home, beautiful landscaping, nice lighting on the trees at night. And he gave all that credit to his wife, who was a decorator. Said she picked out the colors and all those sorts of things. So, I'm sure it looks a little, a little more updated today than it did then, but it was an amazing place and lots and lots of history in the house.
Commissioner Rush?
You know, it seems like the first folks that were there, the Evans, were rather unremarkable. And Rex seems to be so prolific. Why don't we rename it the, the, you know, the Rex, the Rex-Harr House? Don't you think that, I mean, that's more sexy, don't you think? Seems, you know, the Evans were not very prolific, so name it after a movie star dog, you know? I'll bet it would be the first time we've named a house after a dog, okay? So, you know, this would be a cutting-edge kind of a, of a, of a moment right here, don't you think? What do you think, Phil?
I just heard on the radio this week where a parakeet or someplace around, he, you know, the photographer himself took pictures of monkeys and stuff like that, and the macaw, macaw, the macaw. And as the photographer, the human photographer stepped aside, the macaw hit the button to take the pictures. So, those pictures became throughout the world as something of value, you know? They loved them, you know, this, these pictures that were taken by the macaw. Well, the photographer sued to have the copyright in the macaw's name, okay?
I think it was PETA sued to have it in the macaw's name.
Right. Just tell me about animals. You brought up animals here. The judge says, no, absolutely not, you know? It is not a human, you know? A human cannot be, a bird, macaw bird, cannot be on a copyright. So, unfortunately, Mr. Rush.
Well, we're talking about a historic home, not a copyright.
I don't know. I just want to bring this up, okay? Yes.
What does the applicant think?
I like the idea.
You like the idea? Could I offer a change? Should we make it the Rex, Rex-Harr House?
You know, I, I would like to do, but I think the problem is that Rex was a war hero during World War II. And Mr. Parr was, Mr. Parr purchased the house in nineteen seventy-seven. So, I don't think Rex really was able to live in the house. If he had lived in the house, I would be willing to put his name on it. Rex did receive a distinguished war citation from President Harry Truman, so maybe that will be sufficient. And if we're able to locate, if the owners are able to locate a picture, and we can locate a picture on the internet, we'd like to.
Is Rex buried on the property? No? Well, I'll, I'll withdraw my, my, my suggestion. Next thing you know, we'll have PETA down here.
I'd just like to say that as we were looking at your home on Sunday, and, you know, your windows, your windows that are there, we were looking and, you know, unfortunately, we looked inside, okay? You couldn't help it. I'm going, this is just like Jeff Lewis, a designer, you know? It looked like a designed home because everything was in place, nothing was out of place. And it was like, you know, like you would go see a designed home, you know, to bring people in to look at it in there. Just want to say that it is a beautiful house, and the way that, as we saw it decorating, it just is gorgeous and add to the distinguished feature of the home is the way that you, you know, the inside decorations of the home, so. Okay. Now, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair. I recommend that we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resource Commission Application Number Two Zero One Seven dash four-five and approving Historic Registered Categorization Number Two Zero One Seven dash four-four. I also recommend that the city council authorize the city manager and the clerk of the council to execute a historic property preservation agreement, number Two Zero One Seven dash four-nine, with Mark Erwin and Beverly Schwacher, subject to nonsubstantive changes approved by the city manager and city attorney.
Chair, second?
I'm second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Murashi, seconded by Commissioner Win. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Now, we're going to move into our work-study calendar. Please note that there is, will be no motion or action taken on these items. Okay? Melanie?
Let me make sure I have the correct presentation for you. All right. Hello again. So, we started this conversation a few months back where we were talking about what the process was when staff evaluated houses for being placed on the register. And so, today, we wanted to continue that conversation a little bit. Of the seventy or so homes that we accepted applications for, there's a handful of homes that already have been determined to be ineligible, and a couple where there's a little bit of a gray area on if they're eligible or not. So, we wanted to kind of walk through that a little bit. So, as part of Ricardo's presentation, he recapped what are the, what's the criteria for being placed on the list. And the first thing is that the structure, building be fifty years or more. And then in chapter thirty, which is our code for listing, you must meet one of six criteria. The only one I have placed up here tonight is the one dealing with architecture, because that's, as was mentioned earlier, that's the one that's typically the criteria that we're reviewing, and that is typically the one that makes it ineligible in some cases. So, again, that's, that criteria is distinguishing characteristics, characteristics of an architectural style or period that exemplifies a particular architectural style and design features. So, you know, the first thing we do is we identify what architectural style is the particular house, and there's a, in the national register and for the city itself, we have a listing of specific architectural types. And then it's actually, there's, you know, as you know, there's features for each of those architectural types, and we look at that. We look at the exterior materials, the roof, the windows, the door, the chimney, porch, balconies, exterior detailing. Those are all the things that are part of the evaluation on if those are original, if their, their quality and integrity is, is, has been maintained. So, another, another aspect is, from a national register perspective, they give guidance as well. So, in addition to those criteria in our code, the national, from perspective, talks about the integrity of the home. That includes the location, the design, the setting, the materials, the workmanship, the feeling, the association. So, it's kind of a broader feel, but sometimes you hear staff bring up that the, that the setting or the context has been disrupted. That's also part of a site's historic integrity. And just as a quick recap, when we look at the homes, we look at the building records, we see when it was constructed, we look for any additions that, that, that we're not sure if there's permits or not, and we ferret through all that. And if there are outstanding permits, things that have not been permitted, then we stop it in the process, and they're not really eligible until those things have been sorted out. So, this is one of the examples, is an example too at the time, that we provided as a house that was not eligible for listing. And the, it was an English Revival architecture, but I'll flip back to the picture as well. But this is where the window, window fenestration was altered to accommodate vinyl windows, and in some cases, it was enlarged. It has a contemporary entry door, the roof material is incompatible, and the siding, the clad is smooth stucco, let's see, it, it's clad in smooth stucco. So, let's go back to that. So, so when one looks at the home, it's quite attractive. It's a lovely addition to a neighborhood, but from a historical perspective, as we talked the last time, it, it doesn't meet the criteria. So, we talked about the windows, they were enlarged for vinyl, and even if they were placed back, it's, it's not quite authentic. And the door, certainly a door can be replaced, but there, if there's enough features that have removed the integrity of the property, then we notify the applicant that it's not eligible, and it doesn't come before you. So, this one's a little hard to see, but I'm, I'll talk you through it. It's, it's one of them that, it's on North Flower. It's one that it's a minimal traditional. And where it came up in- And where it came up in discussion was that it's, it's a very minimal, minimal traditional. And so again, it's a lovely home, it has the characteristics of a minimal traditional, and, and it depends what philosophy the city and the commission chooses to take on if it would be considered a distinguished example of a minimal traditional. So there's a couple of options, staff can bring these before you with recommendation of denial, and you could help set that policy. We could vet that discussion a little bit more and bring some more examples to you. But that's, that's the subjective sort of thing as we, as we do these evaluations. So one camp would say that it's got the characteristics of minimal traditional, and in our criteria for, to be contributive on the list, it says a good example, could be a good example, but the criteria is it a distinguished, does it have distinguishing characteristics of the architectural style? There's a little gray area there. So those are the kind of things we wanted to vet and discuss a little bit, if not tonight, at a future night. Here's one more example, and if you will, this picture doesn't give it, is not its best angle. If you drive by this house on Santa Clara and look at it straight, it looks lovely. You only see the original house. But when you look at it from a different angle, you see the addition in the back. It's, from this angle, it's slightly above the roof line, it's clearly an addition. You know, they awfully put a lot of effort into trying to make it complimentary, et cetera, but it's, it's another one of those, those areas that is a policy call. So we talked, we talked with our historic consultants on both of the last two that you saw, and there's different philosophies on it. So we wanted to bring that to start the conversation on these kind that are in, in kind of a gray zone. So we can just bring it before you and say, we recommend denial based on this, that, and the other, and then you all can, you know, discern otherwise and, and, you know, recommend approval if that's, if so be it. But, and, and the one for this one, that's an interesting one to be mindful of, is that in the future, when we come to you with additions to historic structures, because the way the code reads now, you've given authority to staff to approve administratively things that are like to like. So window changeouts, going from wood to wood, you were authorized to do that. Accessory structures, you've authorized to do that. But for additions, at this moment, they need to come to you. And so when we, typically when we look to do additions, we have certain criteria that it's distinctive from the original, that it doesn't impact the front primary elevation view. So, so when we look at these, are they, is it appropriate for the list? In some ways, you almost want to look at it in reverse as well. If this were to come today for that addition, would this be something that you would find acceptable? Would it meet the Secretary of Interior standards? And as I mentioned, if you look at it just from the front, all you see is the tiny little house, but from the side angle, as you can see, it's not its best angle, you see, you clearly see the addition and, and that sort of thing. So these are the kind of policy decisions where we need to work with commission and come to an understanding so we can move forward with our last, there's seven or so that are kind of in this gray area. So I, I...
I'm, I mean, I've not been here all that long, but I'm, I'm not aware that you've, you've brought any applications to us where you've, where you're recommending denial or looking for direction from us? Or did I miss something?
We haven't brought the, we, all the ineligible ones, we have not brought to you yet. So that's why these couple you're looking at, we've tucked them to the side, and we wanted to have some conversation with you before we move forward. So it, so it's an opportunity to have some discussion on it, and if, if, if this discussion isn't the perfect time, then we can go back and make our recommendations and just bring them forward.
So regarding additions, I mean, tonight, we approved Blair O'Callaghan's house, and it clearly has an addition from the side that's very obvious, but from the elevation we saw, you can't see it at all. So I know our, it says for, from the primary elevation, and because I've been, served on this commission the longest of anybody, we've had many homes we've put on the registry that do have additions to them. So we do need to be able to allow for that and have some flexibility. How well done or atrocious is that addition, I think is, you know, where we get into the gray, right? And we have to use some common sense on that maybe, but just for newer members of the commission, we do have properties that do have additions.
Absolutely.
That has been allowed in the past.
Yeah. It's that impact on the primary elevation that's key.
Commissioner Harty?
Yes, Melanie, so, so we're talking about a home or a house that is not on the register that has done an addition and now is asking to be on the register, do you think?
Yes, yes, similar to, to Mr. O'Callaghan's house, the West, West House. It's an original house, there was an addition put on it, and then it was put on the register.
Okay.
So this is an example of one where it's a little more pronounced, and one could make the case that on the West House, his is not on the corner, and so from the front elevation, you don't see the addition. So that's where the, the, the goal is that from the front elevation, that it's, it's remains intact.
Okay, in areas where there are surveys that have been done, and a house has been designated as contributing to the historic district or the SD, would, would they get counseling at the counter as to how to approach an addition that, say in the future, they wanted to be on the register or apply for the Mills Act? Are they, is there a guidance to show them how an addition could maybe be done in a sensitive manner where they would still be contributing and could follow the path to become, you know, on the register and in a Mills Act agreement application?
I think that opportunity is definitely there. I would just preface it with saying that we have our hands full to help guide the folks in Henninger Park, in French Park, and those that are on the list to coach and guide them through what they can do. So, I mean, in some ways, that's our first priority, if you will. But certainly, when folks come to us from any of the Wilshire Square, Washington Square, we can try and put in perspective for them, oh, by the way, if you change your house, your windows out to vinyl, just know that you just, you'd need to revert it back if you want to be on the historic list. So that's something that we could work to coach our staff at, but once again, it's, it's, we don't presuppose everybody is interested in being on the historic list, but I hear what you're saying, if we don't tell folks, they, they, you know, they don't know.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the discussion?
Well, I, I think that, that obviously, we do need, we do need to give staff more direction. I like what Phil said, that, you know, we are looking, or should be looking at the primary elevation, but we have to use a bit of common sense. If the addition is, is quite visible from the primary elevation, then, and it's not in keeping with the architectural style, then, you know, obviously, that's something I think maybe we would consider denying. And certainly, if it's on a corner, then I think we have an obligation to look at not just the primary elevation, but, but the other elevations, because it's on a corner. So, you know, that, this is not two plus two equals four. Obviously, there has to be some interpretation, and, and there will be gray areas, but I'm glad to see that we're having this conversation, so.
To start, yeah. Commissioner?
Commissioner Hittardell?
Yes, let me just see if I understand the procedure. Suppose an application is submitted for inclusion on the historic register, and the staff looks at the application, decides that the property is not eligible. As I understand, in the ordinary course of events, that's the end of the matter, it doesn't come here with a recommendation, but not, it just doesn't come here at all. Is that correct?
That is correct. As I mentioned, the last couple of ones you've seen, they're kind of in a gray area. So we inform the applicants that based on what we're seeing, it's a little questionable. But in talking to our historic consultants, it is a little bit of a local policy decision. So, and, and I guess, even though you can't see, let's go the other way, you can't see this one very well, that's kind of a policy call on our, is the commission of the mind of including very minimalist architecture that you may or may not call distinguishing examples of a minimal traditional? Or...
Well, this, this one is so covered up with landscaping.
Yeah, it's the shadows.
You don't know what it is.
Yeah.
So that right there precludes it from being on the register, because there has to be a view corridor.
That's right.
Well, there isn't one there, so.
So, so what we're bringing for you today, Commissioner Hittardell, is the, is the areas that are a little bit gray, and that we, if there was any feedback you wanted to provide staff to direct one way or the other, we're, we're here to listen. Otherwise, we'll continue as we have to screen out the, those that are eligible and not eligible.
Commissioner Schaefer?
I think we have put some homes on that are not, you know, screaming wonderful examples of English Tudor or something. They've been very modest, shall we say. So I'm not opposed to you bringing a property to us and saying, what do you think about this? And, you know, some people might think it's great, and some people might not, and that could go to a vote, I suppose, but I think, yeah, there has to be some common sense in that. And clearly, we know vinyl windows and certain things kick the house out, but not every house should be on the registry. Having said that, I would rather have more on than not, because if it's on the registry, at least it's not going to get any worse, they're not going to mess it up. Where I've seen some pretty horrific additions done, where people just didn't care, and if you happen to be living across the street or next door, then that ruins your view and your enjoyment of a nice neighborhood. I can think of a few houses off the top of my head like that, that I would rather have not seen them get remodeled.
Melanie, if I might, but Sheriff Schaefer, one other opportunity here, and the reason Melanie's bringing it up, bringing it up is typically on these applications, we do have the opportunity to review them for the front elevation to be placed on our local register. For a Mills Act application specifically, we do look at the 360-degree views as to Commissioner Rush's comment. So there are the two levels of review, and so in order to preserve the resource, there is an opportunity to just go on the local register, and then to the extent you feel that it's an excellent example and use the Mills Act, the agreement as a reward, if you will, then there's that second tier available.
Commissioner Rushi?
In this case, we just talked about the architect's style. We didn't talk about anything about the first homeowner, second homeowner, or anything else. I mean, you have that to consider, too. So I agree with Phil, you know, I'd better see more homes in front of us, even if we have to turn it down, but I'd like that chance at it, so we can do our job.
Commissioner Schaefer?
I had a neighbor, shall remain unnamed, who completely tore their house down about 10 years ago and remodeled it, and they told me they were planning on putting it on the registry. And I said to them, I go, well, your house isn't 50 years old anymore, it's, you know, it's new. And they're like, oh, well, it's all about who lived there at first. So, you know, that isn't always the Band-Aid either, right? I mean, it could have been Bob Hope lived there.
I revert to my original question from the other applicant. Are there remains on the property?
Yeah. I don't think so.
But they tore it down, they tore it down, it's a brand-new property, you know?
So I, I think what I'm hearing at this point is that you would, you don't necessarily want to have everything on the list, but you would like to see, you would like to have them come before you. If there's a little gray area, have them come before you.
That's fair enough.
Well, if I could kind of follow up on the issue of procedure, probably it's a question, it's a hypothetical situation, it hasn't happened. Suppose then someone submits an application and it's turned down, then I suppose everyone's been turned down, and they said, well, okay, we were turned down. But suppose they said, well, we want to appeal it. Would they then appeal it here to this commission or, or not?
Uh, I, well, at this point, the ones that have submitted so far, you might recall, didn't have to pay a fee to be placed on the register. So they could ask that it continue to go before you with a denial recommendation, and we could process that. The other thing that comes to mind is that if we did go forward with a denial recommendation, right now, we're taking the listing and the Mills Act at the same time. So that means we need to cash their check for the Mills Act.
I see.
So if we're going forward with a denial, possibly, we go forward with just putting it on the list till that determination's made, and then if it's a positive, then they come back at the next commission meeting so that they're, they're not being charged the $4,000.
The comments that you raise are very, are very good, and this is a discussion, we're bringing forth a presentation for you. And it's good to get input, but as Verney and Melanie are really dedicated to looking at developing a new program, and so what we're going to be, we're, we're listening to what you have to say, but we'd like to bring back to you a proposal once it's thought through. And perhaps there are things like guidelines, many cities have design guidelines that lay out the criteria that you as a board has, as a commission, has come up with as your standards, and then we can apply those at the counter, and so there's lots of different options that we can bring forward, and we'd like the opportunity to do that. Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Yep.
Commissioner Harty?
Thank you. So now that I'm kind of getting a better understanding, the idea that we can look at this a little bit differently, or maybe broaden our, our view of putting buildings or structures or homes on the register, I think that it's kind of exciting, because, you know, time marches on, and if you have a, a structure that's, you know, pretty much all original in the set, you know, it might be important to the setting and the city, and be very valid to have on the register. So I think that we're going in a good direction there. Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Would any member of the public like to speak on this work-study presentation? Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, commissioners, so much for your input on, on this, okay? Okay, staff member comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, commissioners. Thanks again for your continued commitment to historic preservation and allowing us to have these special meetings as we've been kind of plugging away at the long list of applications that we've since processed. We're about two-thirds of the way in with our applications. We have 24 actual applications pending, 17 of which aren't scheduled to move forward. And as Kenina mentioned, we're also trying to take, make small attempts at making some improvements to the program as per some of your requests. At the previous meeting, we did bring forward the plaque, the historic plaque program and creative design standards for that, we're very proud of that. At a future meeting here, we will, we're proud to say that we're going to be reinstating our historic awards program. One thing I wanted to mention to you this evening is that you, as a commission, may start to think about a possible nomination by commissioners here. We'd like to have at least two of you serve as ad hoc members to serve on this historic selection committee that we're going to be talking about at the next meeting, in addition to potentially recommending a local historian or architect to serve on the same ad hoc committee. So just a quick update on that, we are moving forward with the, with the plaque program and historic awards program, so we would like to follow up with you shortly on that, so maybe we can start thinking along that. Commissioner Rushi had brought up at a previous meeting, 621 Spurgeon Street, there has been a follow-up with third enforcement on the particular site. The structure itself out there at the southeast corner of Spurgeon and Civic Center is currently a key structure and was placed on our register in 2001, is known as the Tompkins House. Third enforcement has visited the site and issued a citation on the 11th of this month. Staffs have been in contact with the property owner, resolved unpermitted outstanding work together with the use violations that you mentioned at our last meeting. One, a few other items of, of interest. One, a few other items of interest. Our planning staff here hosted a roundtable of Orange County Historic Planners Working Group on April 4. I'm pleased to, to also discuss the topic where discussion had to do with historic preservation practices and policies. We also talked about fees a little bit, and we're working towards studying our fee structure and possibly modifying that to encourage historic preservation in town. Bear with us also as we update our website to make sure that it is accurate and contains all the recent additions to our historic list in that in coming weeks. And then, finally, just to confirm upcoming meeting dates, May 24 coming up as a special meeting. I'll share with all the staff a follow-up list of future meetings. So, May 24, a special meeting, June 21, a special meeting, and then August 2, another special meeting just as placeholders to get through this remaining, remaining list. And then, October 4 will be a standing regular meeting so that we can have at least one regular meeting this year. So, that's what I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Any other staff comment? No? Commission comments?
I have some comments, Madam Chair, concerning the agenda item marked number six on our agenda. I'd like to relate a few items from the resolution that was not voted on concerning 2525 North Main Street and Park Santiago Neighborhood. From the resolution, Santa Ana Municipal Code sets forth the, the powers and duties of the Historic Resources Commission. These powers and duties include advising and making recommendations regarding historical projects and property, as well as recommending policies regarding protection of historical property while encouraging public understanding and involvement in historic and architectural heritage. The Park Santiago Neighborhood is historically sensitive as it currently has 32 homes that are listed as historic resources on Santa Ana's local Historic Register list. There are five landmark designations, eight key designations, and 19 contributive designations. Two additional properties are currently proposed to be added to the list, one key and one contributive. Historic Resources Commissioners asked that that item be placed on the agenda as a discussion item due to the proximity to the Park Santiago Neighborhood. Now, I have a problem with that agenda item being, being removed from our official, published, posted agenda. I have an opinion here. Who has the legal authority to dictate what goes on the agenda? The answer to this question is very clear. It is up to the governing board to set the agenda. In legal and practical terms, it's the board's agenda, and it's up to them to decide on the matters that wishes, wishes to take up in the meeting. The decision is that of the body, not the chair or any individual member. Unless a law or board policy provides otherwise, decisions about what goes on the agenda or comes off of it and what is actually addressed in the meeting are made by the board by majority vote.
That is not completely true. I recommend no further discussion on this.
I'm not finished. I protest that that is...
I'm sorry, Commissioner. Our attorney is saying no further discussion.
This is not a dictatorship, Madam Chair.
I know it's not, but we have...
I am lodging an official protest. I protest that Agenda Item Number Six concerning 2525 Main Street and Historic Park Santiago Neighborhood was arbitrarily removed from the official posted agenda without a vote of the full commission. I intend to review this action in light of the Brown Act and will take action relative to that act if I believe it is warranted. And I'll make one final statement. I do not appreciate being dictated to, or the commission should not be dictated to or bullied. And I felt we were both dictated to and bullied. Thank you.
I feel like I have a lot of things to talk about. But the only thing I, I, I have something before me. The Historic Designation Marker Guidelines. I do a rubbing of my plaque. And I think that part of the plaque is the particular designation. Like mine says contributive, and there's a little, this little triangular design on each side of the designation. And I think that although I paid for my own plaque, and I changed the name of my house per suggestion of Diane Marsh, I'll leave this with you because I believe otherwise it's identical to what's out there. And I, I think that this sample left off the designation. So, who can I give this to? This rubbing. So, maybe we need to look at the guideline flyer again. Thank you.
Commissioner Hardy, we'd be happy to look at the forms submitted and look at our design guideline to see if we can make some modifications.
And compare my rubbing to the ones the city purchased that are out there. I didn't have a chance to do that. But I believe I took the exact template. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hiddardell? Any comments?
Well, I just wanted to thank and congratulate the homeowners and thank the staff for work on some very interesting and historic properties this time. Very good session.
Okay. Commissioner Rush?
I, too, would like to thank the applicants and that all were designated this evening. And congratulations to you and as you, as you continue to take care of your historic asset. I wanted to thank staff for following up on the Thomas House there at Civic Center and Spurgeon, right? Yeah. And also, with regard to the work you're doing on studying the fees and so forth, I think that's necessary because at the rate we're going, when we get through this batch, we're not going to have much to talk about. So, that's, that's important. The, I, I had brought up something at the last meeting, and that was that, and it was related in the minutes. It says, "If a property has been identified as eligible to be placed on the register," and, and I was addressing this with regard to properties that are, are owned by a religious body who has an automatic exemption. And I'm referencing the house at Bishop and Bristol, which was owned then by the Orange County Catholic Diocese. We tried to put it on the register, and they immediately said, "No, can't do that. You know, we have a, we have an exemption." Well, what'd they do? I think it was six months or a year later. They sold it to a private party who tore the thing down except for one wall and built this McMansion that is just a, an abortion, absolutely atrocious, and tore down that beautiful home that was there. So, my question is, can we not flag the property in some fashion so that if it comes up for sale, you know, or changes hands from a religious body to a private party, we now have the ability to put, place it on the register? Because that was a beautiful historic home and was destroyed. And the Orange County Catholic Diocese is absolutely, they have, they've got, they've got preservation blood on their hands over that one, you know? And I'm sure there's other examples in town where that's happened. That one just is so obvious to me as I drive down Bristol and I drive past, past that monstrosity.
I've tried to look into that. And it's, you know, it's persons' personal private rights. They own their property.
Right.
And if they're not on the registry, we don't have any legal tie to make them get on the registry. But do you have an idea of a co-op from another city or refer to something that you have to do?
Well, I know that, I know that in some cities that there is a, there's some methodology where you can flag, flag the properties. I'm simply suggesting if property's owned by a religious body, it's eligible to be on our, our registry. And it changes hands. I'm not, I'm not attempting that we show up with a gun and force them to sign a, an application. But although, although maybe that's an option, you know, Bugsy Siegel, see, you can get more done with a kind word than a gun than you can with a kind word alone. So, but I know that, I know there's a methodology through the title company to do that. Some cities that have pre-sale inspections, they get an automatic list every month where the city, the properties that changed hands, that didn't do an inspection, that they're able to flag that. So, there is a way to do it.
Commissioner Rush, if I may, we'd be happy to kind of look into that. I know for those properties that we've actually surveyed, we may be able to in our computer system, you know, down at the counter, try to evaluate properties when they come in for demolition to, you know, let the new property owner know that the site has been identified as eligible potentially, and then let them make a determination on whether or not they choose to be, or would like to submit to be placed on our register. For religious institutions, there is the Rupa, the Religious Land Use Act, that does provide some protections for religious institutions against undue hardship placed by, you know, discretionary actions or, or members. But, you know, at this point, we, we'd be happy to look into that a bit further for you.
Okay, all right. By the way, next year is 150th anniversary of the city. And it would seem this body should be planning to do something to celebrate that.
Commissioner Rush, I've already spoken to the city manager and to include the Historic Resource Commission in that planning. He came to our Neighborhood Association meeting, so he is already committed to have us involved.
And that's all I have.
I just want to congratulate all the homeowners and thank the staff very much for their hard work and also looking at new directions and trying new things out and bringing it to us. That's great. Verney, as you said, you had a meeting. I would love to hear more about meetings like that and if we could be invited to, like, you know, the preservation meeting you mentioned, that'd be wonderful. I'd certainly sit in on that. Also, I brought up an issue of solar panels. People have come to me about solar panels, and I know the city is thinking about it. I'd love to hear more direction on that, whether we're going to approve them, you know, over the historic preservation or not. And that would come to also to landscaping. Does landscaping, if somebody does a drought tolerant, would we take that away from the historic nature of looking at the home?
Try and give you a partial response to that. So, for solar, we've had a couple of requests recently. And, you know, there's a state law that prohibits what cities can do. But we are working with folks that come to us and working with them for historic structures, particularly with Mills Acts, to not have them on the front elevation, not on the primary elevation. And so far, we've been successful. There are other cities that are kind of acquiesce on it, on historic structures, and there's some that are tough. I think it's Anaheim is tough. So, we're trying to work as closely as we can with the applicants to not have it on the front elevation and keep that integrity. But there's a little, there's a little bit of a state law that we're negotiating with. And then, as it relates to landscaping, once again, the, the working group that we met with. Landscaping is kind of a funny thing. You can't, you know, you don't want to take that too far, but it does have an impact on the setting and such. So, the city of Anaheim actually has the opportunity. They have a landscape architect on, on their staff, and they actually consult their historic properties on giving them some guidance. And so, they have talked about putting together cut sheets for their residents, and we're working with them to hopefully share in that, that work. And then, we can share with yourselves and share with the applicants and the owners.
Thank you, Melanie. And then, last but not least, I would like to remind everybody about the Floral Park Home Tour this weekend, both Saturday and Sunday from 10 to 4. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rushi. Commissioner Schaefer?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate the homeowners that got their homes listed tonight. And I'd like to thank the rest of the audience for your patience sitting through our long meeting. In addition to the Floral Park Home and Garden Tour, and I did not bring a brochure, shame on me, is Mother's Day weekend, the Saturday before Mother's Day, on the 12th, is the West Floral Park Garden Tour, which is also a wonderful opportunity to walk through the neighborhood and see some beautiful yards that are quite well-done. The other thing is the fee study you mentioned, Verney. I understand, someone told me, and I don't know if this is fact or not, but since the fees have gone up to the $10,000, we've only had two applicants. Is that, could you address that?
That's correct. We received probably two, two or three inquiries since the, the fees have gone up. We're working diligently to make sure that our fees are, are correct and that not onerous, and make sure they're full cost recovery. And then, kind of leave it up to the city council at a certain point to determine if they're going to want to, you know, supplement some, some part of that fee to, to increase our applicants.
Besides our general dislike of the $10,000 fee, will we have an opportunity before the city council votes on that to be a part of that discussion?
We'd be happy to share at our next May meeting. We're going to give you an overview of just what we've surveyed, and that might, may include some fees there for you to comment on as well.
Thank you. And then, at a previous meeting, I had brought up the McFadden House. It's on our registry and on Greenleaf Street. It is completely overgrown from the front, a lot of potted plants, and the, there's a car sort of buried under some greenery on the driveway that looks like it hasn't been run in years. And I just would like to see code enforcement take a look at that. And I don't know if there was any follow-up from my prior comment about that. Does there any, staff have anything about that?
Was not aware of that one. I'd be happy to follow up.
And then, I, too, would like to just say, I was shocked that staff pulled an item off our agenda tonight. I'm disappointed that, that did not seem like it was done in the proper manner. I'm not an attorney, but we had requested specifically that that would be agendaized. And I believe the staff and the city attorney, everybody, was behind that. So, I'm disappointed that we did not have the opportunity to discuss that tonight. And hopefully, we will at a future meeting.
Okay. For Commissioner Schaefer and, and Hardy, who wasn't here at the last meeting, I, in my comments, requested that this, each of us, whoever appointed us to the commission, write in regards to the fee structure. And to the mayor on that, to send an email on that and telling how important and the impact of these fees, if they continue at this rate, will have on our ability to place these historic homes. And, and I also stated that South of 17th, you know, East and West, our homes down there are over 50 years old now. And there are neighborhoods in there. I know Sandpoint is looking at coming in and bringing their homes as a historic nature and over on the west side because they have some key people who, back in the '50s, helped develop Santa Ana and, and bring issues out as far as the general welfare of the community. So, they're looking at that. They definitely cannot afford $10,000. There's no way. So, and I put that into my memo to Councilmember David Vena Vitas to remind him, "David, your home is now historic, you know, it'll be eligible." So, you know, kind of bring it home. Like, it's just not north of 17th. It's now southeast and west of 17th Street that these homes are now eligible based on the criteria. I have been, residents have been sending me emails about certain things as far as historic nature. And one of them was Quonson Huts. So, Benny, Verney, thank you so much. It says, "In response to inquiry by Commissioner Christie, on Quonson Huts are attributed to the World War II area as barracks and temporary storage. These types of huts were military surplus and subsequently used as civilian purposes after the war. The ones in Santa Ana all appear to have been placed on private contract, placed by private contractors. So, it is difficult to trace the exact origin of these huts." private contractors, so it is difficult to trace the exact origin of these huts. Only the ones destroyed at the, uh, only the, only the ones destroyed at the Delhi Center location have been attributed to the original location." So, um, now that there is nine existing Quonson Hut locations remaining within our city, four of these locations have Quonson Huts that were constructed in the immediately, in the immediate post-war era, uh, year of nineteen forty-six. Four were built in the nineteen sixties, and two have an unknown date of constructions. Uh, these are two location at seven-two-eight and seven-three-zero North Port Sedia, and were erected in nineteen forty-six. So, um, all of you that were, uh, emailing me about Quonson Huts, okay? I just want to bring you to that attention. So, where do we stand right now?
So, at this point, we, we would like to include them as part of our citywide survey when we get to that point. Uh, we'd be happy to add some additional, um, notes in our system to, um, identify them as potential resources since, um, the OHP has designated them as potential for categorization. Um, you know, that's what we have at this point.
Okay. If you will follow up with that. And then, uh, there is the house that is located at, um, oh my gosh, where is this location? Uh, isn't this house on the historic registry? I've noticed going by, its windows are all boarded up and hope they did not replace them with something different. And this is the house. I got a picture, but-
With no address.
On this and so forth. And it says, yes, the house is listed on this, on the city register. Uh, in fact, it is named the Palmeroy House, okay? And it's listed as a landmark structure. The owner has received planning approval to repair and replace elements, uh, including the wood windows, brick, veneer, wood siding, architectural detailing, and a remodel of the interior of the units. The project was submitted to the Henninger Park Review Committee and received their group approval, uh, on that. The remodel is currently in building plan check, so.
Can I say something? I neglected to, um, to thank Associate Planner Ricardo Soto for, um, following up with, uh, concerns that Commissioner Rush shared with me, and I shared with, um, Ricardo, and he gave me a lengthy update as to where we're at with that, um, property. So, um, so I, I'm not sure if that's what Roberta got, if you copied her or not, but I know Commissioner Rush, you copied him, so.
That's all I got.
I don't, I don't think I want to read the whole thing, but I don't-
I, you guys sent me emails and said, "What's going on?" I was a cheer, and I just get the response this way, and re- bringing this back, you know?
Madam Chairman-
I believe several commissioners, um, sorry to interrupt Commissioner Rush, had inquired on the property, and so we figured we, we sent it to, um, those that had inquired and with the hope that you were all updated.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a comment. Um, I, I don't know if I read it or if somebody told me, but is it correct that it's projected to be in plan check for six months?
This project or just in January?
No, no. This, this project, Palmeroy House.
It's been, uh, building plan check since January.
I mean, these people bought the property, I want to say it was, I don't remember, September, October, and, uh, uh, when would you expect that it would come out? Do you know?
Did you see the picture?
Oh, no. This is just for us every day.
Planning staff met with the, the new property owner at the site late last year. They then submitted a series of plans addressing our comments until they, uh, submitted a plan we were able to approve. At that point, they then submitted into building plan check, which was the beginning of this year, January. So, building plan check, they've been going back and forth addressing building code-related corrections since January. Uh, I saw the applicant actually at the counter this afternoon. It sounds like they've addressed all the building code-related issues on the plans and are looking to pull permits tomorrow.
Hmm. Oh, that's, that's good. And I, it's just that it's, man, I'm telling you, that place is, it's going to turn into a block of Swiss cheese in another ninety days. I mean, they're breaking the windows out of it and peeling stuff off. It's a tragedy, tragedy. But, uh, uh, one, completely switching topics, one thing I forgot to mention is, um, I don't know who our delivery folks are, but last month's agenda was deli- for me, was delivered to Janelle's house. Her husband was not happy about that. Um, just kidding. Uh, and for this meeting, I got none. Nothing was delivered. So, uh, the delivery guy has lost his way.
Okay. All right.
I, I, uh, delivered the package to your home, and I placed it in the slot where it says to insert all the way in.
For today's meeting?
For today's meeting.
When did you deliver it?
Um, last Thursday.
Are you sure you were mine out?
Unless the, the numbers were inaccurate on the, on the, the, the house.
Huh?
It was in an envelope. It wasn't in a binder this time around.
Hmm.
Okay. All right. Uh, moving on, um, I just want to remind everyone that on May twelfth is National Leather Carriers Day for the food drive, okay, that we have. I sit on, uh, Community Action Partnership Board, which is the parent of the Orange County Food Bank. So, um, the need that we have for people that are low-income and especially the homeless is now getting us. We're running out of food. So, the National Leather Carriers have put this day of May twelfth for you to set out your canned goods, um, on your, on your property, you know, underneath your mailbox to help build up the, the food supply for the Orange County Food Bank on that, and we would greatly appreciate our, our, I mean, we only get so much money from the government right now, and the need has just tripled for food. So, tell your neighbors, your neighborhood, uh, uh, business, on May twelfth, please put out, uh, if you can, um, a, a bag of food, canned goods, any non, non-perishable foods, okay? Uh, no milk, uh, I don't, you know, things like that, or fruit, fresh fruit, do not do that because of the fact it's perishable. So, just want to remind. I too would like to thank all of you for taking the time to preserve the history of Santa Ana by placing your homes on our historic register. As you can see, you know, you go to other towns and, uh, other places, people are just, uh, tearing down these beautiful homes and putting up things that you just go, "No." Okay? No, doesn't even fit in our neighborhood. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for, for taking the time and the, um, uh, and, um, placing that home because of the fact that you are preserving our history for the next generation. And as we all know, our next generation, the millennials, just want to ride bicycles and electric cars, you know, and everything else. It's amazing what millennials think. But anyway, thank you so much. And with that, um, our next meeting will be May twenty-fourth. It's a special meeting. Uh, the meeting is now, uh, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rush.
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Commissioner Tara. Motion, uh, asked, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.